Listen.
Did you know about that burning?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't.
It's only anything you don't like, but let's put it under. Sure. You're. Got it. Absolutely. And I can pay or be on that. So just to.
Well, why thought we don't sign?
Or is it?
We don't need it. If you guys want to. Want to answer.
Yeah.
The Jolene, the things Jolene's works. So. Some questions about this. I have one. Jeff. Thank you. He's very good on you.
Officer, Officer, as you. And are you in? I'm already. Obviously, so that you can tell. I did. I'll look over at. Yeah.
It's eight thirty, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started. I'll call the Board of Delta County Commissioners' regular meeting order for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand me and join. Plenty of leave.
I'm pleasantly interested by. States of. And to be part of. One patient. In this. Patient.
Thank you. And if the commissioners would, uh. Work with me on one, I've got a. A quote from Theodore Roosevelt, eighteen ninety-nine, come out of his autobiography, The Rough Riders. I am horror unjust war. I have horror injustice and bullying by the strong at the expense of the weak, whether among nations or individuals. I have poured violence and bloodshed. I believe that war should never be resorted to when or so long as it is honorably possible to avoid it. I respect all men and women who from high motives and with sanity and self-respect do all they can to avert war. I advocate preparation for war in order to avert war. And I should never advocate for war unless it were the only alternative to dishonor. As we sit on the brink of war in the Middle East again, I'd ask you all to keep the nation of Israel in your prayers. Thank you. Are there any additions or edits to the agenda?
Um, actually, I would like to make one addition that we have a. Uh, discussion about Prop HH and a, uh. A letter from the board. In opposition.
Terry, anything else? Ms. Robbie?
Not me.
The agenda will still will stand as amended. Uh, County Clerk, Eric Stevenson. Oh, constituent time, sorry. Welcome, everybody. Sorry. Uh, anybody who'd like to speak to the board this this morning? Everybody get signed in?
I didn't get signed in.
And if you'd like to address the board, please have a seat. Make sure that microphone with them.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Hondo Benson, uh, kind of on behalf of Benson Brothers and then just the public. One of the few things to get here on record. Been talking to Don and Mike quite a bit, so. Um, anyhow. Going back here a couple of months ago, county did a job on private property, admitted to it. Um, there's been a lot of whoops. Going on the dump job I brought up before on specs on material. So I knew that in a little part you did bid out. Said you met specs. The county engineer gave me specs, emailed it with you and Scott involved. I brought it up two months prior. Then it it failed when a third party tested it. So. Big question on engineering department with the county and who's testing materials? And that's pretty big liability, I feel, there. Here again, going back to the job done on private property, there's three commissioners. I didn't know there was any jobs that could be done. Without three votes on there, um, being told that Mike Single Handley made the call to do that job. That was a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money that here again, no one's been responsible or held accountable or. Nothing. And going back to the dump job here that just happened. Who's at fault here in the specs that were sent to me? Those were faulty or? I mean, that could, that opens a big door to the county. To me. When you're you're showing me that you have past material and the engineer of Delta County emails it to me. And then it fails with a third-party engineer. And then. Here again. Who's at fault? Who's responsible? Um. Other stuff, North Road, three years on that project. So not only the public safety, here again, specs. As a contractor or private enterprise, you guys make the rules. We use, you follow state specs. And are you guys don't, I guess, have to follow your own rules or no one follows up on that? Because here again, if that was bitted out. We have a third-party engineer that's testing it as the work's getting done. If it's failed, we got a bond out there. If I can't meet it, that bond's pulled. Another construction company comes in and finishes the job. Three years, still not done, told that shorthanded, but then we take on a big dump job. We spend a million dollars on a D nine dozer. But you're shorthanded, but you're taking on more stuff. Are you sure you're not taking on stuff that's a little over your head? And then. Who's responsible at the end when it's not? When stuff's not getting done. And there's a line of stuff and stuff that just keeps getting added up here. We gotta, we've been to court with you guys over this, competing against private enterprise and then not you guys doing the what you should. And that's being broke every year. That's broke. I still have not got any. Price. And we just updated that two or three years ago in court. And every year I'm supposed to get an updated price sheet. Have not seen one. So the county continues to break a court order. They continue not to follow their own rules. And then when mistakes do happen, who's accountable? And it's why isn't this being brought to the taxpayer? Attention. If here again, if I wasn't in this business and digging into all this. I want knowing a lot of people don't know. And, uh, as a concerned taxpayer in business. Operator in Delta County, it's getting. Pretty tough, you know, when I gotta sit here and go around about it this way. Another thing here earlier this year. Pay, you know, we're in business, we pay a lot of taxes. On top of that, in the rental business, there's an SMM fee, two percent that goes directly to Delta County. Every month I write it another check. For that, and that's the business I'm in. And. Here again, I never, uh. The dump had some rental equipment that you guys had to rent, never got a phone call, went to Mesa County and spent that money. Here and. Just, you know, we're, uh. We're in business, Delta County, I think it's your biggest probably is construction. In Delta County is probably what brings in the most money, but yet you guys don't bid any jobs out. You decide to in-house them. And then when mistakes are. Going on and stuff's not done correctly, who's accountable? If you want to play the game and be in it. I want to see somebody have some skin in the game and some responsibility. I think that's about. All I have and just wanted that on the public record. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And let me make sure I got, because I was taking some notes.
Sure.
And Adobe Buttes on the sands back.
Correct. And that you ended up having to use chip material.
Yeah.
And I I can see all that information is emailed. Don, Don's in the middle. He know, because that was emailed with him the same time with Scott. Scott's. And I forewarned him about this two months prior to the job when that first got bid out.
And North Road. And then you said private property, which were.
So private property, uh, Mike Lane will know about that. And I've had a meeting on the site about that. That was in May. Um, and that was, I didn't get, I. Not off the top of my head, but I can get you an exact address, but that was all done a hundred percent.
Make sure I got the big topics.
Yep, yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Chairman, can I address a couple of things? It's unusual. On a couple of things that you brought up, a certain regard to the court order, that's a two-year, every two years that, uh, price sheet is to be updated. And it's on the website, and that's the way the order order reads. Um, so it's available out there. So it's every two years, not every year.
Okay. Then on bigger jobs, then if we're addressing that on bigger jobs and stuff, that's supposed to be sent or bid out or at least a, uh. A cost analysis on the job. So.
Exactly what you're asking. I don't want, but any bigger jobs are gonna be posted through bid and correct. So all, so all.
Sure.
All. Construction jobs, because it would be over fifty thousand dollars, uh, are gonna be posted on bid and correct. So.
So the job on private property? Where was that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else for constituent time this morning? Anybody online? We'll move to Terry Stevenson, County Clerk.
Good morning, Commissioners and Robbie. I have the minutes for the October, or twenty twenty-three Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Are there any changes, additions, or additions?
I have none.
Good to meet you here.
Um, I also have the minutes for the October twelfth Board of County Commissioners' special meeting. Are there any additions, additions, or changes on those?
None. No. Sorry.
Okay, so my next, um. Is a board of consideration for a liquor license for Electric Mountain. Um, Lodge doing, or exactly, these spaces LLC doing business as Electric Mountain Lodge. It's for a renewal of a hotel and restaurant license. Um, I have contacted the sheriff and there were no issues with that. I received all the necessary documentation and fees and therefore I am recommending a. Renew.
Any question to comment here?
I'll move that the board approve the, uh, liquor license renewal for a hotel and restaurant license for Empty Spaces LLC, doing business as Electric Mountain Lodge, located at four one three three eight Electric Mountain Lane in Peonia.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 My next item is, uh, your consideration for a liquor license renewal for beer and wine license for Zins and Gardens LLC, located at both. Four nine six and twelve four nine eight thirty seven ninety road in Peonia. Um, again, I've contacted the sheriff and there have been no issues. I've received the necessary documentation. And fees and I'm recommending an approval for the renewal of this license.
Question, comments, commissioners?
I'll move that we approve the liquor license renewal. For beer and wine license for Zen Zen Gardens LLC, located at twelve four ninety-six. And twelve four ninety-eight thirty-seven ninety road Peonia.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And my last item is, um, a liquor license renewal for lodging entertainment license for Grand Mesa Lodge LLC. Located at twenty-five eight sixty-one, highway sixty-five in Cedar Ridge. I received this liquor license renewal from the state. They did not send it to the local licensing authority, which is you. Um, but the state did let me know. And so again, we've received all the necessary documentation. Therefore, I would recommend an approval of this renewal.
Any discussion, commissioners?
I'll move that the Board approve the liquor license renewal for a lodging and entertainment license for Grand Mesa Lodge LLC, located at two five eight six one, highway sixty-five in Cedar Ridge.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Business?
First item is Board's consideration discussion of adding a FTE, full-time equivalent position for payable to administration. Per our policy, then a business plan must be presented to the Board of County Commissioners if it is off budget. We do have a proposed, uh, additional accounts payable to. Uh, the twenty twenty-four budget. I would like to present at this time, though, the, uh, business plan. To add this, uh, to administration so that we could advertise for an accounts payable, uh, person. Uh, per, again, our, uh, increased activity with not only ACHs, but twenty to twenty-five credit cards each month. As well as a significant increase in the number of bills that currently our finance director is. Providing the eight, the accounts payable duties. Uh, and the increased workload is, uh. Asking Leona that she is working, uh, weekends and nights to do the accounts payable. This is not sustainable. And so at this point, I'm asking that the commissioners would approve an accounts payable FTE. That would, uh, move forward, working with our succession plan as. Leona works towards, uh, stepping down and not as many hours.
And we have, we have discussed this position in in prior. Uh, budget hearings. Um, so I. I think, uh, I think this was a wise move forward, so. I'd I'd make a motion to approve this, uh. This, uh, accounts payable. Person for a full-time position.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Have you got qualifications and stuff ready to go?
Leona's working on that and, uh, will work with Michelle and Nicole and Carmen to finalize that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Next, then, the Board's consideration discussion regarding Adobe Buttes' equipment transfer in lieu of standby payments.
I'm glad to present to Board of Commissioners, um, the quote of the trade that. Ready for the decision that Adobe Buttes does not run. Currently, the engine locked up. Um. Consite asked about it as far as the trade for any move of standby charges. And, uh, it is worth twenty-three to thirty thousand if it is running. And if it is not running, it is not worth. Much. It's just junk basically. This is what they told us.
And and for the record, what were those standby charges?
Twenty thousand one ninety.
How long has that thing been? Down?
Six, eight months.
Okay. So what's Scott brought this forward, and I wanted to make sure the commissioners had a chance to consider it. Um. Get rid of that old scraper and it was the nineteen eighties vintage?
Yes.
Um, and and trade to consi, which seemed like a good deal to me.
Nineteen eighties was a good year.
It's great.
I've got no, I've got no problem with that.
Well, I move that we do, uh, approve.
Yeah.
The. Scraper that is broke down. To trade it for, in lieu of standby payments with the company.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Bring it up, there's Scott. Okay.
Thanks for bringing it to us.
Will.
Next, then, Board discussion regarding zip code changes. GIS Director Kerry Durco brought to our attention that they had recently issued a new address. To an individual in the Service Creek area and received correspondence with the Postal Service that zip code had changed. Uh. Upon further research by GIS, then it was determined that this, uh, happens occasionally from the post office. And, uh, they did, uh, release a new map. We will have this on the, on the website, but you will see that each of the Delta County zip codes have been, uh. Modified, uh, from existing, especially when you look at the west boundary of eight one four two eight. The southern boundary of eight one four one nine and then, uh, the northern boundary of eight one four one six. But again, this is the United States Postal Service. That has modified the existing zip code boundaries.
And no notice was given of this action from the postal service to.
Not to our address technician, uh, Justin, nor GIS.
Any discussion on that? We just wanted to get that on record. Start letting people know.
Yeah, there's substantial changes there west of Cedar Edge, so.
So. Will that be posted to the website?
It will.
Okay. So. Everybody, uh. The postal service has changed the zip codes. You may or may not be affected. The map will be on the website. Certainly contact the postal service if you think. You're on the boundary there of the new outlines. If you haven't heard anything. Very good.
Next is the additional item, Prop HH.
Um. Thank you for entertaining this, uh, Terry. I apologize for this. This is something we should have thought of sooner, but, uh. The release of ballots snuck up on us here, so, um. I, uh. And when I say this release snuck up, it's facetious because we've known about it for months. Um. I, uh, I I just thought we, uh, we should probably, uh, be able to have the chance to take a position on this as a board. Um. Uh, CCI, CML, the Special Districts Associations have all come out against HH. Um, the other reason I think we should think about, uh. Being in opposition to HH is because the, uh, op ed force of the Daily Sentinel came out in favor of it on the Sunday newspaper, which tells me it's probably a bad thing, too. Um. Sorry. More tongue-in-cheek there. Um. The, uh, the the biggest problems with with HH are, you know, the the short-term benefits just totally eat up at Tabor. In the long term. And it's, it's not going to favor. Uh, the special districts, the local municipalities, local governments that have to, uh, have to still pay their bills. Um, it's beneficial for school districts and and that's, that's about it. So, um, I think, uh, you know, there's, there's issues we have in the tax code. Gallagher has its problems. It's, it's, you know, crucifying businesses on on the tax rates, um, but this is not the answer. So, um. Any other?
In a presentation this weekend by Janice Rich. There are three points that that stuck to me. One. Um. The state does not need to put on a ballot measure to reduce taxes, only when they increase taxes. So. I think the language that's been proposed in L N R is very misleading. If they were actually going to reduce our taxes, they could just do it. Second, the proposed change is amounts to point zero five. Uh, differential between for both property and commercial. So that's very. It it's insignificant. Um. So don't let that mislead you. And third, this is, to me, a. Huge overreach by state government in an attempt to get into eventually land use. As they try to, to, uh. Work with, get into, um. Property tax so that they have a bigger pot of money to spend. On the front range, so. So the motion here is, Mike, do you have anything that?
Well, just like you brought out, the wording of it, uh. Concerns me because people see the wording as a. Tax decrease. Well, everybody's gonna vote for a dash tax decrease, but the wording is misleading and that's. That's a big concern that we need to. Uh, be aware of as voters.
And I would add the long-term implications to Tabor are not favorable for any taxpayer going forward.
So the. Is that a motion?
No, that wasn't a motion. I wanted a lot of time for discussion first, but I I will make a motion that, uh, that this board, uh, officially opposed proposition HH and, uh. We, uh. Uh. Put out a letter, uh, to be publicized stating our opposition.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I've already been working Jolene getting the appropriate data for that.
You want a letter addressed?
Yeah. In conjunction with Jolene, because she's getting the data. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that forward. Uh, Lindsay, schedule.
After, um, the session, we, um, twelve forty-five to two P M, uh, B O C C work session for John the rubbish. Here at five sixty Dodge Street. And at three thirty to five P M today, we have a Board of Health meeting. Wednesday, October eighteenth, eight A M to five P M, we have budget meetings here at five sixty Dodge Street. Six to eight P M, there's a public meeting on that company mitigation plan update. That will be, that is a public meeting open to everyone. It's at the Cedar Ridge Civic Center. Thursday, October nineteenth, eleven to twelve thirty, there is a water and land committee meeting. That's at the Montrose County Road and Bridge Facility. Um, later that night, on Thursday, October nineteenth, we have five thirty to six thirty theater with a board member. That is where, uh, Don Supas. It's open to the public. He is buying the first round of beers. So join us at, yeah, I would have them.
Just one, just one.
You saying that, what a party.
That's good.
October twentieth, eight A M to five P M, we have budget meetings again here at five sixty Dodge Street. Um, three P M to seven P M, there is a D M E A Sparkin Park E V car show up at Fair, at the Fairgrounds in Pontius. Saturday, October twenty-first, eight A M to twelve, there's the Adobe cleanup day. Uh, we're gonna meet at Trap Club Road. If you need more information about that event. There are flyers on that back table. We also have a, um, event page on our Facebook page. You're welcome to go there to get. Reach out to us here at five. Uh, Monday, October. Third, there at six at eight P M, we have another public meeting hazard mitigation plan update. And that is at, uh, here at our, uh, Human Services Building located at three twenty West Bosworth Street. Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, one P M to two P M, uh, road and bridge work session at five six Dodge Street. And Thursday, October twenty-sixth, three to four P M, residents at Delta Ground. Resident, the residents at Delta grand opening at fourteen ninety-eight Villa Street in Delta. Am I missing any?
I had a special B O C C meeting for budget. Is that? Or did that occur on our twelfth?
That was the last one.
Okay. There'll be no B O C C meeting on the thirty-first? Just letting you know.
Yeah.
Don't hold your breath. Something may come up.
Then our next official B O C C meeting will be November seventh, which is Election Day. And. We're going to keep that very short. Choked you up already?
That's all I have.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
Nope.
Thank you, Lindsay. Uh. From the Delta County Sheriff's Office, we have the Delta County Detention Facility Population Counting Board for Monday, October ninth. Twenty twenty-three. Male inmates, county jail eighteen, female inmates, county jail five. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, four. Female inmates, Department of Correction, zero, for a total of twenty-seven. Average daily inmate population for the week of October two through October nine is thirty-eight point six. And we're gonna take just a minute. We're gonna do, uh, service awards for employees at at nine o'clock. We're gonna give the people femoral venous to get here. If anybody needs, take a break. Now's time to.
You are awesome. Thank you.
No, I said I need to use your, the, 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 the. Because I would actually start it off. Use this time.
John, when you get a minute after we get done with this, I figure. In November, not October. Nice try. We got everybody back. Well, it is nine o'clock. We're going to come back in. One of the favorite things we get to do is recognize, uh, employees have been working for Delta County for so many years. I would note, uh, County Clerk Stevenson said, looking at the list here, there's a hundred years of experience, so. That is amazing. And that's public service. I appreciate it. What I'd like to do is, uh, I'm going to read these off, and if you come up here and join us, except for Ron. Ron, you get to sit back there. I'm in the corner. But I want you guys to know how very proud of, uh, you we are, so. So for, we'll start off, uh, Karina, our thoughts? Ten years. Belinda Sanford, ten years. Carolyn Sookley? Ten years. Eric Plaza? Fifteen years. Beauty Haze, fifteen years. Here's one from the Cretaceous, uh, Rick MeWendy, forty years. You know, you must have started when you were ten, Mr. Karina. And we all know pictures aren't done until Lindsay says they're done.
Thanks, Dad. That awesome, thanks.
Uh, our next order of business is at nine thirty, County Attorney John Baird, so we're going to take a few minutes break here.
You can watch. Yeah, I was actually thinking, well, see, I'm literally staying here long, so I've got to go right, I haven't come back and something else to say, what did you ask for? They've, they've done the whole thing, I mean, it might as well either, really, what's the challenge of thinking, shooting against the health of it? Okay, now I'm doing this, I'm gonna, I guess, the key is, the key is you don't mess around.
It is, it's, it's the old argument. It's eight twenty, or nine twenty-nine. We'll wait till exactly nine thirty to bring everybody back home. At least we have somebody online. So just roll over to nine thirty, everybody. Welcome back. We are, um, we're County Commissioners, regular meeting for October seventeen. So, County Attorney time.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I have one item on the board's agenda for consideration this morning. That is the board's consideration of a memorandum of agreement regarding the purchase, installation, and operation of an electric vehicle charger to be located at three eighty-eight South Grand Mesa Drive in Cedarage. Uh, this is a, uh, M O A memorandum of agreement between Delta County and the Service Creek Valley Historical Society Incorporated. Basically speaks for itself, but essentially this is an agreement where Delta County would install, um, through, um, various grant funds and that sort of thing. And Chairman, you can address that in a room of more detail. A, uh, level three, um, fast charger there at the, uh, Historical Society at the Pioneer Town. And this is part of a larger program, uh, in Delta County of, uh, I believe four different, uh, charging systems. So what you have before you is, uh, an agreement that's already been signed by, uh, Diane Clayton as President of the, uh, Historical Society. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, or Chair, if you would like to fill in some details there.
Yes, this will be one of three, possibly four, um, agreements we're going to be doing with other entities for these level three E V chargers. Uh, Delta County's fiscal agent for, um, an S E P supplemental environmental project, uh, from West Felk Mine and a charging Colorado grant. Um, specifically, uh, for E V chargers. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It'll be one charger, uh, just a one pedestal.
It'd be a one pedestal with two cords on it.
So you charge two vehicles.
So you can charge two vehicles. These level threes, the big difference is they are pre-phase power and they charge, do a complete charge within an hour. And they are expandable if they're seeing increased usage. Uh, Historical Society can add on to, put in different pedestal in. In addition. Any other question?
Um, just, just for the record, to make sure that the, uh, long-term maintenance and operation of this will, uh, be the responsibility of the, uh, Historical Society?
That's correct. Upon, uh, construction of the site, installation of the equipment and commissioning, um, Delta County will then grant the, the charger and, and all the revenues that they're from to the Historical Society as a nonprofit.
Just wanted that on the record. I have, I have no questions. I think this'll, uh, this'll be a good program. It'll be a good, uh, good thing for, uh, tourism to our county, I think, and I, uh, think it'll definitely help, help the nonprofits involved, so.
I have nothing further.
And I'll move that the board, uh, approve the memorandum of agreement regarding purchase, installation, and operation of an electric vehicle charger to be located at three eighty-eight South Grand Mesa Drive in Cedar Edge, Colorado.
I second that.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
I second the amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything else for us today, Mr. Baird?
That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Uh, we're going to go back into, we're going to, uh, go back into recess until ten o'clock for plan. Thank you. Well, welcome back, everybody. It's, uh, nine fifty-nine, ten o'clock. Just rolled over. Um, we're back on record with Florida County Commissioners. We're October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. It's time for planning. Uh, I will turn this over to Kate Kirk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, today we have G L N two-three dash zero four six Flosser. This application is before you today to consider a limited use permit for a medium animal feeding operation or MAFO for a chicken facility that will house a flock of twenty-five thousand laying hens. The project site is located southeast of Fruitland Make the Road and northeast of West Black Canyon Road. The project includes one project site spanning across three parcels in both Delta and Montrose Counties. There are three parcels that are located north of the county line in Delta, totaling about eighty-seven acres combined, and they have been zoned A thirty-five. The third parcel is located south of the county line in Montrose County and is approximately thirty-sixty-five acres. The request of the application is to develop the fifty-acre parcel with a single-family residence as well as a chicken facility. Under the land use code, a single-family residence is in allowed use in all zones. The chicken facility, however, fell under the medium animal feeding operation, which requires a limited use with notice, which can be processed administratively by the director. However, this application is being processed as a conditional use, which went to the Planning Commission on September thirteenth. The project site is located approximately three point one three miles southwest of the town of Crawford, just north of the Delta and Montrose County lines. Parcels within Delta County have been zoned A thirty-five, and you can see there's a portion of A twenty that abuts the northeast corner of the parcel. The majority of the parcels in the area consist of properties with residences throughout the area. So this is the site plan for the single-family residence. This is required review by your board. However, staff wanted to illustrate both the residence as well as the chicken facility in relation to one another. The blue area is the proposed residential site with the dash red line being the proposed residential driveway from Fruitland Make the Road. The yellow star is the location of the existing well on the property. This is the site plan for the chicken facility. You can see the red dash line from the residential driveway as well as the well location to the north of the facility. The green highlighted area is the approximate location of the chicken facility. The orange square is the litter storage building and the blue area is the proposed septic field location. The dash peach colored line along the west boundary line and the proposed access from the facility traveling south to the access permitted by Montrose County off of West Black Canyon Road. So this is an aerial view of both the proposed residential site and the chicken facility as well as the access from West Black Canyon Road in Montrose County. As you can see, the proposed access to the facility travels through the middle of the Montrose parcel following the terrain of trees and trumps as well as the depression until it reaches the project parcel where it borders the west boundary line of the property before traversing east to the facility. This travel surface avoids impacting the irrigated ag fields. The yellow square that you see is the area of the existing access in Montrose where the access had originally been applied for. However, Montrose County requested the access be moved further west, which is illustrated in the blue circle. So MAPOs are determined by the total number of animal units, which are defined in chapter fourteen of the land use code. Chickens are defined at zero point zero two animal units. The twenty-five thousand times zero point zero two equals five hundred animal units, which is, uh, between the hundred and fifty and nine hundred and ninety-nine range for a medium, medium animal feeding operation. The minimum lot size required for a MAPO is thirty-five acres, which the project parcel meet as in its fifty acres total. Required setbacks that are affected here are a thousand feet from residential uses and a hundred feet from all property lines. There are no major water sources within the setbacks listed under the table two D and no public schools. Management plans that are required for a MAPO, according to land use code, include odor, water quality, dust, noise, pests, and truck grabbing. The facility will be a cage-free, non-G M O A-laying facility that will be family-owned and operated, so no outside employment. The facility will consist of a flock of twenty-five thousand laying hens. Each flock will be housed for approximately fourteen months. It is estimated that two trucks per week on average will visit the facility. One truck will be delivering feed and one will be picking up and hauling eggs away from the facility. The latest technology will be used to monitor hourly water use, temperatures, feed consumption, and chicken weight. The odor management requires, uh, requirements include description of the plan, technology that minimizes to the extent practicable off-site odor impacts, addressing animal waste, using odor control equipment that conforms to common and accepted professional practices and testing, sampling, and analysis of the operation. Water quality is regulated by the state under Colorado Regulation eighty-one. The Water Quality Control Commission includes best management practices that include activities, procedures, or practices necessary for the reduction of impacts on surface or groundwater. Some of the practices listed in Regulation eighty-one are diverting runoff from uncontaminated areas, eliminating slopes, minimizing water wasted, decreasing wastewater discharges to surface water, minimizing manure transport to surface water, following setbacks and utilizing buffer zones. The proposal includes waste packaging and other solid waste being disposed of in a dumpster onsite that will be hauled away by a commercial solid waste disposal firm. The dust management plan must include all available and practicable methods that are technologically feasible and economically reasonable that will reduce, prevent, and control fugitive dust as well as the materials that are used to be used for abatement and control. According to G I S data, West Black Canyon Road is paved. However, the driveway to the facility from the county road is gravelled. The proposed dust mitigation plan includes using natural products. When those are not available, the applicant has proposed the use of magchloride on an as-needed basis. Noise shall not exceed thresholds set out in C R S twenty-five dash twelve dash one oh three maximum permissible noise levels. Where design is not sufficient to mitigate noise impacts, the applicant shall submit a noise plan that includes operational limitations that will mitigate the noise impacts. Commercial uses are limited to a sound level of sixty D V A at twenty-five feet from the property boundary during the hours of seven A M to seven P M. The facility will consist of ventilation fans that are designed to limit noise. It is not anticipated that the noise level from the MAPO activities will exceed these limits. The applicant has stated that the fans will be similar to, if not lower than normal conversations, which are measured at sixty to seventy D V A. Should noise levels exceed the threshold limits, noise mitigation techs, techniques such as privacy screening will be implemented. Should noise levels exceed the threshold limits, noise mitigation techs techniques such as privacy screening will be implemented. The pest management plan shall include the types of pests that may be associated with the proposed use. Methods, techniques, biological agents, et cetera, need to be listed in the plan, as well as the timing of application. And the chemicals or agents and the method of storage. It will also need to include the. Controls that will be used to minimize impacts to nearby properties, water bodies, livestock, et cetera. Currently, the pests that are of concern are rodents and flies. The facility will use only E P A. Approved states. As far as flies, the facility will be cleaned of litter multiple times a day so that. Moist environments are not present for flies to populate. Fly tape will also be used in other areas for the adult flies. So truck routing needs to include a type or class of all vehicles that will be entering the facility with anticipated frequency and arrival slash departure of trucks. The hours of truck traffic need to be included in the plan as well as a map illustrating the routes from a county road or state highway. As noted here, the Planning Commission made a motion to amend condition two uh to reflect the access from Fruitland Mesa Road. Was to be used for residential purposes only. Uh as such, the truck routing plan for the commercial facility will need to be amended if those conditions are accepted by your board. So the land use code lists limitations on modifications for setbacks for intensive ag uses. The only way to setback to an intensive ag use. Can be modified is to process the application as a conditional use, which requires review by the Planning Commission with recommendations to your board. The limitations are that the modified setbacks cannot be more than fifty percent from the required setback for residential uses. And not more than twenty-five percent from the required setback for property lines. The applicant is requesting a reduced setback from the nearest residence, which is Knox, of about nine hundred and fifty feet. Which is fifty feet less than the required thousand feet. As well as a reduced setback from the property line of about eighty feet, which is twenty feet less than the required one hundred feet. Neither of these proposed reductions exceed the limitations set out in the code. Staff does not see any issue with the proposed reduced setbacks. Mister Knox did submit a letter stating that he was okay with the reduced setbacks from his residence and that letter was included in your agenda packet. The applicant submitted other plans that were not specifically listed under the MAFO requirements. Those plans included landscape, lighting. Agricultural and fuel. The applicant was issued a cer- certification by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for stormwater discharges for construction activities. The total area of disturbance is one point seven five acres. The certificate authorizes discharge of stormwater from the facility. To the waters of the state of Colorado, including Smith Fork and the Gunnison River. It also authorizes activity for residential development, non-structural and other development and a chicken house. Staff received comments in regards to the validity of the certificate. And whether or not the certificate was issued with knowledge of the full proposal for the commercial facility, so the twenty-five thousand laying hens versus a small residential. Chicken coop. Um staff received their response from C D P H E. However, that response was to inform staff. That they had a large number of reviews that were in the process, that they were in the process of. And they're they could not give us a response at this time as to what they had received. Um and that they would get to us as soon as possible. So today I do not have any response from C D P H E in regards to what. They received as far as that goes. So the subject property has two water sources. A well was permitted from the Division of Water Resources. However, this well is to be used for residential purposes only. The division stated that the permit needs to be amended to include an augmentation plan that would allow and support the commercial use of the chicken facility. Uh I did talk to Greg Powers this morning. He said to date that uh the amendment has not been filed with their department. Um but that he did talk to the applicant about the best way to go about that, so. Um staff received confirmation from Fruitland Domes- Domestic Water Company. That the applicant owns four hundred shares of F D W C. They also confirmed that they have no constraints on shareholder use of water once the water leaves the distribution system. And it turns the private line on the shareholder property. Therefore, these shares can be used for the chicken facility without stipulations. Uh access is existing from Fruitland Mesa Road to an existing forty-foot access and utility easement. And easement runs through the southwest corner of the neighboring property, which is the Marrow property. Staff has received comments from the Marrows in regards to the access. They are opposed to any commercial use of the access or any amendment to the existing width. The land use code requires traffic impact studies for uses that require site plans, including limited and conditional uses. County engineering required a level one traffic impact study for the access from Fruitland Mesa Road for the residential use only. And the access from Montrose County uh for the commercial use is not within the jurisdiction of Delta County uh as far as review goes, so therefore. We did not require a traffic impact study for that. Um there's an existing easement located on the property in Montrose County. The easement is restricted to utilities. Ingress and egress for residential purposes only, no commercial vehicles. With that being said, staff cannot determine if the access issued in Montrose County is encroaching on said easement. And no documentation has been received to confirm the location of the easement. Public notices are sent out to the adjoining property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius. Generally, those properties that are touching the project parcel. However, due to the intensification of the proposed facility, staff increased the noticing radius to a half mile, which included residents in both. Delta and Montrose Counties. Staff received multiple comments from the public in opposition of the proposed facility. Concerns included the number of chicken facilities on Fruitland Mesa, water supply, traffic and access and road damage. The Planning Commission held a meeting on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant and numerous neighbors were on attendance at this meeting. The Planning Commission discussed access, traffic, odor, water and ownership of parcels. Numerous neighbors voiced concerns with increased traffic. Fruitland Mesa Road, as they stated, the road was not built to county road standards. And cannot withstand truck traffic for this type of operation. Generally, the neighbors were opposed to this type of use, especially being on Fruitland Mesa, as there are other chicken facilities existing in the area. Both in Delta and Montrose Counties. So staff recommended seven conditions at the Planning Commission meeting, to which the Planning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval. Subject to eight conditions. The commission amended condition number two to reflect access from Fruitland Mesa Road to be used for residential uses only. As staff had originally proposed it to be used for residential uses with the ability for emergency access in the event. West Black Canyon Road became blocked inaccessible. The commission also added condition number eight in regard to the ownership as they were as there were concerns. The public that the applicant was applying for these uses on property that he did not yet own. And according to assessor records, the parcel has been fully transferred to the applicant's name. Uh the rest of these conditions pertain to access, confirmation of the well permit being amended to include commercial use. As well as confirmation from Fruitland Domestic Water for shares that have been purchased, dust and noise mitigation. And confirmation that the permitted Montrose access is not encroaching on the existing easement from West Black Canyon Road. As well as written confirmation from Montrose County that the proposed location of the access is sufficient and does not require any further permitting. To date, staff has received confirmation from Fruitland Domestic Water Company that four hundred shares have been purchased by the applicant. Staff has also received the final inspection of the access permit for Montrose County. So with that, the Planning Commission recommends that your board find that P L N two-three dash zero four-six Blosser. Is consistent with applicable policies of the Delta County Master Plan and that the land use code and the land use code for a limited use permit. For a medium medium animal feeding operation for a chicken facility housing twenty-five thousand laying hens. Developed over three parcels spanning between Delta and Montrose Counties. Generally located southeast of Fruitland Mesa Road and northeast of West Black Canyon Road. In the A thirty-five zone of Delta County and conditionally approved, P L N two-three dash zero four-six Blosser. L U P for a medium animal feeding operation, subject to eight conditions. That concludes my presentation and Mr. Blosser is here.
Any questions for planning commissioners? Just uh. I I guess condition number two, I've got some issues with here. Um you know, the. I I can understand keeping it residential, the the easement was there. Um. But I I just think it it's pretty short-sighted of the Planning Commission to not allow it for emergency access. You know, twenty-five thousand dead chickens because of an emergency that we can't control on a on another road seems seems a bit harsh. So I uh I really question the uh. Uh condition number two that the P C put out there, so.
Mike, do you have anything?
Uh you received the email that we received.
Yeah.
Uh and that's attached. Is that correct?
It's not attached to the staff report, it's something else.
The email we received was uh after the time period.
Mister Blosser, would you like to join us up at the table here? This stuff, is that microphone on?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Um Kate, I had a question about the C D P H E stormwater permit. Why is that not a uh condition? That that is granted before this moves forward?
Um so that was brought up to our attention after uh the staff report had gone out. So I was trying to make an effort to get confirmation of that before this meeting, but was unable to, so. We can certainly add it as a condition. That's what the board would like to do.
Mister Blosser, have you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh the commercial access to Montrose County, I was a little confused there. Has that been confirmed yet?
Yes.
We got documentation.
I've got final inspection on the access that has been permitted. But I don't know where that is in relation to this easement, so I'm not really sure what they looked at as far as that goes.
Okay, that's out of our jurisdiction. It certainly is Montrose County, but.
Now, you asked commercial. Uh I asked them on the chicken house and in their. World, it's considered ag. We have no regulations for ag. Was the response that I got.
Okay. We'd like to see that in in writing.
I don't foresee a problem with that, but yeah.
And uh Division of Water Resources, how long do we think that'll be before they come back with an answer on the amended well permit?
When I made the application, they told me to expect six months.
Remind me, when did you make that application?
Uh the application for the uh. Augmentation or the adjustment, I don't have an exact date in my memory, but I would say that we're two months into it.
So.
And.
Their minimum.
She said Greg hasn't received anything. I was of the understanding, my attorney told me they're submitting an application. Um I would have to go back and look at the conversations, but I wanna say three weeks, a month ago. So length of time can vary depending on, you know. Uh if there's discoveries made, if there's something that comes up that has to be investigated, et cetera, so. To say that uh it'll be six months to the day is uh obviously outside of my. Realm of control.
That being optimistic in my.
I can accept that as fact. And that's the reason I uh I uh opted to do the domestic. Real domestic water in the interim.
On the positioning of the of the barn itself, here, the application requests a variance from a hundred-foot setback to eighty-foot. Uh I haven't been on the property. I have been up on the Fruitland Mesa a number of times, so kinda understand it. What's what's driving that eighty-foot variance?
Topography.
On the west side or the east side?
On the west side drops off. Uh so the further east that I move, the less uh disturbance there is.
Okay. So it's a ground issue, not a.
Yes. And it's easier access uh for us, you know, the less disturbance of trees, less uh.
Cause you're a hundred and five feet from the south boundary.
Actually, uh we moved south of that. And I don't think that that's been included in that packet, but we're on the south side of that ba- uh fence line that you saw there in that picture.
Kate, do you have an update on them?
Um I thought I had the most recent location of the facility, so. Would that not the?
I'd have to go back and look at that picture that was up on the screen. I'm not, uh let me see if I've got that in my. The initial, the initial uh. Expectation.
Oh, it was moved, yes, from what we see here. But the eighty feet remains.
The eighty feet remains, yes. Uh we moved that boundary line, that that hundred and five was originally my south boundary. Uh when we had gone under contract. Uh we changed that acreage, moved that boundary to have a fifty-acre parcel instead of a thirty-eight acre parcel, which was originally there.
And could you tell me a bit about the ventilation fans and how the how they're designed for uh noise mitigation?
Well, there's uh there's lubers in it, but it's also shaped, the shape of the fans and the speed that they're running. Uh plays a role in in sound and it's more complex than my pay grade gives me. Uh as far as telling you, just exactly all that they've done. I've gone to uh others. Uh that have had those and measured uh sound levels. And I feel comfortable that uh, you know. The reality is easily managed. In terms of sound levels. But to tell you what they actually did in design, I don't know that uh. You know, that's in their documents, what they're telling us, not something that I've done myself to. To redesign or or make them.
And are those things running twenty-four seven? What's?
Uh it's on demand. Uh the ventilation system, the computer controls that um. Uh ventilation uh speed, the fan speed and the quantity of fans is regulated by. Fire and temperature.
And in a facility that's six hundred and forty feet by fifty, how many fans would be there? Or sixty by one forty?
I'd have to go back and read. I wanna say eleven or uh it's either eleven or thirteen, I forget.
Other questions, commissioners? Or Mister Blosser or staff?
No, but I think uh I think we've pretty much got everything. Um we've got the, you know, the the well permits, one of the conditional items. Um obviously, item number eight's been uh resolved already with the ownership of property. Um I'm I'm pretty comfortable with the the noise mitigation aspect with. With variable speed fans and volume versus velocity. I think you can achieve the. The air movement without the noise. Um once again, my my concern was just with the uh. Short-sightedness of condition number two, not being able to utilize that for an emergency. Ingress egress.
Can I comment on that for you?
Yes.
Uh I understand your comment and I wanna interject something on the public record on my end. And that is my commitment is to work with my neighbors on that. And with their concern for that, you know, I'm committed to being. Being the neighbor that I should be or need to be and have a relationship that's. Uh, amiable between the two of us. So I I understand, understand your comment and and yes, that would have been my preference at the same time. Uh, my preference for working with the neighbors is greater than.
Okay.
The uh, opportunity.
Okay, well, then, if applicant agrees with condition number two, then I will uh. I will, I will not, I will not worry about it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing else, is there anybody else in the audience?
Have to open it up for public hearing before we do that, so. Um, Mister Blosser, how would you feel about an uh, condition number nine? This is also dependent upon receiving a stormwater permit from C D P H E. I think that's important.
Uh. I I don't have a problem with that, I I'm a little confused. Uh, with where we're at in that that I did put in an application and I did receive one.
So he does have one, there's just. Concern from the public that it's not valid because the chicken. House term is not clear.
Which, I guess I have a question with that, the stormwater permit. Is that based on the end use or is that based on the soil disturbance?
Hmm, that should be based upon the acreage of soil disturbance.
So, and in that case somewhat irrelevant to the end use?
Well, we need confirmation from C D P H E, that's all I'm making sure.
And I don't have a problem with that, you know, uh, again, I was somewhat confused with the.
Obviously I am too.
Well, it's okay.
Very good, well, thank you, any other questions for staff or Mister Blosser? I'd like to open this up for public comment, if you, Mister Blosser, if you'd like to have a seat back there. Uh, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to the commissioners regarding this uh, this application? Please come forward and have a seat, introduce yourself, where you live.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I'm Pam Jacobus and I'm married to Myron Morrow. We live at three, seven, two, three, zero Fruitland Mesa Road. Um, which is the property directly to the north. And um, our property is the one with the easement that goes across the residential easement. Um, I have comments here, but I, just based on the discussion here about the emergency access. Um, I really appreciated Mister Blasor's comments and that is uh. Indicative or or consistent with our experience with him so far throughout this process. He has been very uh, forthcoming, we feel like, and has expressed. Numerous times that he wants to be a good neighbor and we want to be good neighbors too. And he has been very um, receptive to our concerns about our access and. And every issue really, he also um, invited us, took us on a tour of. One of the facilities up the road along with uh, the other neighbors, um, sorry, I'm a little nervous. But uh, we really have appreciated that and so I wanted to to say that. And then just, um, Commissioner, is it Supes?
Supus, yes.
Supus, uh, just I, as as you guys were talking, so it's not in my comment, I didn't, I I did address the emergency um. Access in my written comment in your packet, but uh, I did want to point out, um. That that is addressed in Mrs. Simpkins' uh, original intent letter. And she says that the reasoning for. The residential access, um. Sorry, for this was that the terrain to the south has fairly good incline and the width of the easement is not conducive to large truck traffic. Therefore not lending itself to anything other than residential usage, especially during the winter months, so I just. Because that came up, it's extra, so there you go, now I'm two forty five, I timed it, so I'm good. Um, good morning commissioners, we continue to strongly oppose any commercial use related to the proposed chicken facility on our residential access easement. From Fruitland Mesa Road, according to our extremely limited knowledge of existing Colorado law. In the case of Lazy Dog Ranch versus Telluray Ranch Corp. The intent of the original grantor is the overriding consideration. You have the notarized letter from Mrs. Simpkins, the original grantor in your packet. She clearly states that her original intent was ingress and egress for residential purposes only. No semi trucks or commercial use related to the chicken facility should be allowed on this access. All equipment and deliveries of materials for the construction of the Black Canyon driveway access and the chicken facility. Should be routed via West Black Canyon Road and not through our easement. It should not be utilized as an access for workers at the chicken facility or as a convenient, we're kind of worried about this. Um, a convenient throughway between this facility and the facility to the east and the facility to the west. The only approved access for this should be via West Black Canyon Road, of course, routine residential use and deliveries would be allowed. Um, as they are on any driveway, maintaining this Fruitland Road access as a residential one will improve safety. And will help to maintain the rural nature of the surrounding property, which is encouraged in both the strategic master plan. And in the land use code. We support condition number two in the staff report as amended by the planning commission. Um, and then there's one additional item I would like you to consider. Uh, in May, we were told by the planning department staff. That it has been routine practice in Delta County to approve similar facilities with exempt domestic wells. The well commissioner Greg Powers has written in his letter, which is in your packet, that not a non exemptive. Sorry, non exempt commercial well with a court approved augmentation plan is required for similar commercial operations. He notes in his letter that there are only two egg laying operations on Fruitland that have non exempt wealth permits. Since we believe that there are more than two similar facilities on Fruitland. We would ask that the B O C C follow up with new planning department leadership. To confirm that all similar operations on the Mesa are being conducted in accordance with Colorado Department of Water Resources guidelines. We do not oppose these facilities. We just ask you to confirm that each one has a commercial well with an approved augmentation plan. And um, thanks so much for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else today?
Good morning. Hope you all are well today, as well as everyone in the audience, I'm going to move this a little closer because I found it a little hard for me to hear and. Please speak up from behind me, I know how important it is, everyone hears what we have to say. Um, much of Delta County infrastructure was built in a different.
Could you introduce yourself and?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, all good.
I'm Helen Groom, I live, well, less than a half a mile from the proposed facility. I live um, Fruitland Mesa Road, three, six, nine, six, five, to be specific. Um, I live diagonally from the Marrows and uh, and the Nafs, who, one of the closer neighbors as the crow flies. Okay, sir. Um, much of the Delta County infrastructure was built in a different time and a different climate. Now, that sounds a lot like the first sentence in Commissioner Coons's recent op ed in the Delta County Independent, you are exactly right. Um, when I read his article, I was amazed at the parallels between his article. And the factors involved in Mister Blasor's application to build a chicken facility. First of all, the roads on Fruitland Mesa were neither designed nor built for semi trucks. And even in the last thirty four years, the number of access points to the roads. Have increased dramatically along with the number of vehicles of all size, and I must admit. It has to do with not the size of the vehicles, but the speed of the vehicles. And the fact that they don't necessarily stay in their own lanes on blind curves. Uh, with dermody, the picture is complicated by the boundary between Montrose and Delta County running straight across the Mesa. With some roads traveling back and forth through the counties. West Black Canyon Road is a good example. It, Mister Blasor's semi trucks will enter that Montrose County Road heading east. It, West Black Canyon Road is not paved. If his trucks turned west on the same road, it soon turns north through Delta County, still a gravel road. Each of the documents I've seen from both counties still say that it is paved. Now, Black Canyon Road is paved, but he has to travel with his trucks, and of course I realize that's Montrose, you know, territory. I want to compliment the the uh, county staff. Who I presume deserve the credit for follow up on the questions raised by citizens who provided input. I still have some questions which may not be answered today. First, when a medium animal feeding operation is defined as one hundred fifty to ninety, nine, nine hundred ninety nine animals. Does that mean cows, for example? Second, I believe Mister Blasor has said that his chicken facility will have a dirt floor. Yet I continue to read that it will have a cement floor. Third, if Mister Blasor's proposal gets approved with conditions today, who verifies that conditions are met? Fourth, what happens with the setback variances when any of the affected properties sells in the future? There seem to be enough of a problem with what seemed to be a, you know, a a well established easement for the Marrows in this case. And so I'm just thinking of the future. Fifth, I understand that the distance from a well or residence to a large chicken facility is a public health issue. Why doesn't that apply to one's own property? In conclusion, I want to compliment all of those working to uphold the standards in Delta County. Many people do not want regulations, as you know, until a change will affect their lives and their property. In terms of generating income in Delta County, I believe the future will show that decisions made now will determine. Both property value and desirability of that property in the future. Wise decisions now with attention to detail will help protect people like Mister Blasor and his endeavors. As well as those who have been here many years. And Richard, I sincerely wish you the very best now and long into the future, you have taken on a huge project.
Thank you.
Questions?
We appreciate you being here.
Okay, thanks. And I appreciate all of you.
We should be able to leave your notes with Kate.
Oh, okay.
And Jan, you have the same, please.
Um, can I just first copy, I had written down a couple of notes from the meeting that I'll just.
We'll do it afterwards.
Okay.
Is anybody else would like to speak? Mister Neff?
My name is Jerry Neff, my wife and I, my wife Louise and I live in the property that's immediately to the west of the Blosser property. This is uh, not been an easy thing for anyone involved and certainly not for Mister Blosser and the people that he's working with. There are many things to be considered and all of them have impacts on everyone else. My observation of this process has been that it's been a good one. And that all the people involved with it have been forthcoming and have. Move forward in the best interests of all concerned. Most of all, Mister Blosser. Everything that I have seen that we have asked him to pay attention to, he has given a great deal of attention to. And he's demonstrated without a question that he cares. So in my opinion. In the fifty six years Louise and I have been married, we have learned that in the many places we've lived. What has mattered most to us has been our neighbors. Each of those engagements have involved a variety of circumstances that could have been very uncomfortable and could have been difficult. But in those cases where we came together and worked them out. We found we had better neighbors than ever before, and it just kept turning out that way. In those cases where we were unable to do that, we eventually found another place to live, it just wasn't sustainable. My experience with Richard Blosser is that he's going to be an excellent neighbor. He's fulfilled his every commitment to, at least that directly involve our property. And uh, we look forward to greeting him and his family as they move forward here. A final comment is. I feel that in these times, we kind of lose track of the fact that people often. In my experience, almost always will fulfill our expectation. Says a lot about what we expect of someone. When we expect something that's less than what we wish it would be, we're going to stand a good chance of getting it. If our expectations are high, people come through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Neff. Anyone else today? Hearing none, we'll close the uh, public comments.
On the computer.
Anybody on?
No.
Thank you for your reminder. I couldn't hear you.
Okay. The Stockdale letter.
Yes. Uh, we did receive a, an email letter from. Mendelis.
Yeah.
Benless Stockdale, and that's been entered into record. Hearing no other public comments, we'll close that part, uh, anything additional from staff or commissioners here?
Well, maybe if, uh, you know, like I said, my uh, my my concern was with the uh. You know, use of that access for emergency, but if uh, Mister Blosser's fine with that, then I I will uh, I will take away my concern on that. Um. And I I appreciate the uh, the way the applicant has uh. Approached the neighbors in this process, this is usually uh, usually the case on these applications, when the uh, applicant reaches out to the neighbors, we can. We can come to a mutual agreement, so I I applaud him on that, on that. Moving forward here, um, and I I have uh. I think all my questions have been answered, chairman.
Well, thank you for showing up and thank you for your civility and your comments, we appreciate that. Anytime a facility comes up, um, it does raise questions about. Uh, the planning staff and they've received several comments that they've been able to, uh, easy to work with, they've answered their questions. And and the citizens here that showed up, thank you very much for coming, I know the uh, it takes time out of your day. But if it's important to you, you know, then you have a. The ability to show up and voice your concerns and thank you for coming. Um. I have no other questions about it.
But what's the will of the board?
We do have a resolution, I notice, we have a resolution number?
Yeah. Twenty one.
I will move that the board adopt resolution number twenty twenty three dash R dash twenty one, a resolution conditionally approving a limited use chicken permit for a medium. Animal feeding operation for a chicken facility housing twenty five thousand laying hens generally located southeast of Fruitland Mesa Road Crawford. Uh, parcels listed.
Hi, Zach and Dad.
And that includes with the conditions listed.
Uh, that includes the conditions listed, I uh. I I think every, we had come to the agreement that everything had been met, so.
Okay. Any other discussion then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, so done. Mister Blosser, we also wish you the best of luck in your endeavors here, your reputation with your neighbors is stellar, so. Mister Blosser, we also wish you the best of luck in your endeavors here. Your reputation with your neighbors is stellar, so. We think that's great. Thank you very much. Planning, is there anything else for the commissioners today?
Mr. thought I would like. Solitaire process. They would have over and beyond. Really W and so.
Well done, Kate. Yes, thank you, Addison, on the Brittany too. You've got a good staff. Appreciate it. Uh, Kate, you might want to get copies up. Uh, we're running past time for what would be services, so we're gonna take a, a quick break here and come back at five. Again, thank you everybody for being here. All good? We'll come back on record. Welcome everybody. It is October seventeenth, twenty twenty three. It's time for human services. Annie, take it away.
Good morning. Um, we will start as usual with the financials and I think Nicole distributed the payment approval report. Um, for you guys to sign off on, and I wasn't for sure there was any questions in the, um, was there anything you wanted to point out for that also?
Hope on it, budget manager. I never get to introduce myself. Um, yeah, so for payment approval report, nothing, you know, that would be different for now, but do you have any questions regarding?
I have.
Then going to the budget, we're about five percent under projected, so projected with sixty seven or sixty six point six seven, we're at sixty one point two. Those are any questions on those sections?
What do you attribute the differential on that?
Um, I think. Do you like the vacancies a little bit? Um.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we have had some, we have had some change in staff, but I also think that there specifically to um, certain program areas. There's staff that have, um, we have lost in eligibility, um, but then staff gained in child welfare, so it kind of evens out a little bit, but um, also school has started. And so with that, uh, contracts have begun that also we have contracted with the school, and so that also changes things a little bit too.
That's true. Does project it evenly across the, the twelve months and the contracts for both child welfare and TAN have started.
Any other questions for Nicole?
I have none.
Well, Bernard.
Um, also just to point out too, we are looking at, so when we look at billing for services and child welfare is eighty twenty and core is eighty twenty, we also have a regional contract um, with uh, within the seventh judicial district for mental health and substance abuse services as well. And so some of the things that we were billing directly to the block for child welfare, we are navigating how we can spend them in core. Core um, is funded at an eighty twenty, but also from that regional, so it's an extra pot of money to help uh, us balance the block as we continue, because placement costs are gonna continue to rise every year, but then also um, depending on the amount of placements that we have, that can fluctuate. So we're trying to balance out the block a little better as well. So we've been working on that the last couple of months.
We also have a plan kind of to help caseworkers with looking at medic, Medicaid covered services first. So we'll be kind of doing a training on that net this month, end of this month, so that may show less core billing.
And some of those providers that um, do accept Medicaid have expanded those services where prior, prior you had to use a core provider, so. Alrighty, so. Next updates from there, um, C cap is still going through quite a bit of turmoil with universal pre K, and so that's still being navigated. Um, they anticipate, and they reached out to counties to try and anticipate what you thought you were gonna spend in your allocation. We projected um, about sixty to seventy percent, depending on how much U P K has an effect on that. And I think we still don't know. They are gonna be using strategies to help for recruitment and retention of providers in the area. So, for example, if a provider needed um, either looking at repayment on educational loans as an incentive, or if they wanted to search out for their education, which would allow them to expand their childcare center, that they would help fund those for providers. So that piece is happening and um, we're gonna be looking at how we can share that information out to providers as well. Um, and work with uh Bright Futures and the Delta Family Center. Um, to try to expand the network because C cap providers have always been a struggle in our area. And so we want to continue to expand that. It seems like there'll be more funding to do that.
So where, where are they getting all this magical funding from? There's a hu- there's a huge need out there across the state, I, and that's gonna be a drop in the bucket of anything that come up.
Yeah, so a part of it is ARPA funding that is time limited of when they have to spend it. So that's why they were wondering, and has previously been used to backfill counties that um, went over their allocations in the last two years. But at this point, that's where they wanted to look at those true projections about if we weren't gonna spend our full allocation, could they look at balancing out the allocations beforehand and then use this money extra because they have to have it spent down um, before that would close, the block would close. So, that's what they're hoping to do. Um, I don't know how much specifically will be shared with each county. They have not shared that information yet. So we don't know, yeah. Hopefully soon. But then we can start to make a target of how we want to spend that money and how it can be used.
How, how, I mean, just any idea numbers wise how short we are on being able to fill these, these spots here or?
We're able to fill the spots with providers. We just don't have enough providers for as many kids as.
Well, that, that, that's kind of what I meant. I was just kind of curious where, I mean, how many, how many spots short are we for the kids that, that have a need?
I would say we'd need to at least, at, at a minimum, double our providers.
Well, that would be helpful too, if we could get providers that would do like alternative care, so evenings and weekends. Um, because a lot of people do work those schedules, and so that's the hardest part is trying to find someone that can take the kids. Or with special needs as well. Sometimes we do have the kids that have special needs. Um, so those seem to be the challenges that I've seen.
And they've really, I mean, it's not, when you look at the way childcare has changed, it's not the full licensure and certification from the state. It can be your neighbor who can be provided um, a C cap stipend and go through some preliminary background checks. So they've really opened it up to more providers, but to incentivize them to, even if they could get money to expand into their home to grow that, grow a daycare room, and then they could fill more spots, things like that. So those are the pieces that we'll be working with providers on of how do we grow more spots that way. If we don't grow providers, how do we grow who we have?
Yeah, thank you. Annie, could you pull that microphone to you a little bit?
Am I gonna get really loud?
Kent, is that better?
Oh, sorry. Okay. Um, eligibility, we did receive our incentives um, this past year so that uh, we're gonna be able to target towards um, potentially um, uh, helping with staff uh, retention and then um, and they still are uh, short several positions, but also still dealing with the call center of the fifty to seventy calls a day. Um, still dealing with a lot of residents that are struggling with their redeterminations. For example, if the system has not been updated for two and a half years with their Medicaid, they're sending out these redetermination packets to old addresses if someone has moved potentially. So they don't know that their redetermination is coming up. And so we've had several clients, for example, that their redetermination was sent in May. They didn't receive it, and so they didn't turn it back in. And so in July, their case closed. For um, for individuals that are on Medicare, what happened is, is that Medicare then started pulling their premiums from their social security versus them being covered by Medicaid. And so that hundred and sixty dollars or hundred and forty dollars a month that they're pulling, that is a lifeline for people. And so now the process is, we're reaching out to them at times, um, going to extreme measures to reach out to them, uh, to make sure they get that paperwork, get it turned in. It can backdate, but then they have to go to Medicare and get recoup those funds, and that takes a bit. And so for this population that's difficult to track at times, so we have been referring um, to Tri-County and trying to help navigate um, these pieces because they don't know that it's happening at times, so. That's a lot of work that's happening not only with the calls but walk-ins and um, I think all staff really are hands on deck for this piece, and so they're working really hard. Um, and I would, I would say that, you know, we're working on incentive wise, how do we help support them? And what are things we can do, strategies? What is extra work that we can pick up? Um, and I think each level is picking up extra work in an area that they can try to just navigate so that they can make that workload easier for everyone. Sorry, if you want to add to that? Alrighty, um, as we move on to child welfare and adult protection, um, we will be um, conducting interviews this month for um, the administrator position. And so um, we are interested to see what that will look like. Um, we have uh, the differential model, uh, differential response model. We're partnering with Montrose and we have a meeting set up within, um, we had one last month and then this month where um, we have to engage in that process as more of a prevention uh, program area. There's, I think, forty six out of sixty four counties that have, don't have it fully implemented. We're one of those, um, as well as Montrose. I think the San Miguel County, um, or San, um, San Miguel, Yuray have it, um, Mesa has it. Gunnison does not. So we're, just within our area, um, we have a few that have gone through that. And essentially, the model is directed towards partnering with the families on a lower risk referral to engage them in services that will eventually be preventative for them entering the child welfare system. So um, it's a different um, approach to families, and so there is training, um, there will be um, uh, in-person training. They will come from the Kemp Center and train both of the counties at the same time. And then even go out with the caseworkers in the field and really do some examples versus just telling them how to doing it and how to do it and then send them out into the community, right? So we'll see some um, some engagement work in, within the field, so. We're happy for that.
Has that model been tried elsewhere?
Yes, so it's actually statewide adopted model. Um, the big elevens started it early on as they had the, the ability and staff at the time to do it, and it's been around for about I want to say six or seven years. Um, counties just had to have very specific things and processes in place before you could start it, be, um, such as like group supervision, implementation, implementation of full red teams. Um, and so it opens up a whole pathway even within the system that we can't see currently, but we'll be able to see after this time. So I think it, essentially the fear is that it's more work and would bring more cases because you're engaging sooner than you would be. But in the long run, what it does do is allow that, um, the cases that are at higher risk when they come to us, it prevents that piece of it. So in the long run, within implementation, within a year, we should see a difference. Um, if, if the practices is being followed the way that it should be and we're engaging families, that we should start to see a shift. Even if it's a little one and prevents something, I mean, I think we're hopeful for that, so.
Hopefully it changes a trend line.
Yes. And really is, I'm hopeful that especially for some of our severe mental health um, youth that struggle with behavioral health and mental health in the community, they will receive services sooner, faster, um, and engage with providers on a long-term basis so that they're not getting to the crisis moments that we're all having to navigate.
And the big eleven, that's not as like the S E C or Pac twelve or?
Well, I mean, I, I only know him as the big eleven. Um, but they, you know, they always try, I think they've always taken on, when new program areas come out, they always take the lead just because they have the ability to do that with their numbers and their funding. And so then um, as it filters down to the smaller counties, we decide what works best in the medium and smaller counties. So it's been around enough that there are counties our size that can say, this may work for the big eleven, but it does not work for medium and small, and here's how we implemented it differently.
Thank you.
Um, adult protection is our shining star this month. They had their audit, um, and they pulled um, about eleven cases, had to take one out just because of their algorithm, and out of that six received a hundred percent. And so that they were in a hundred percent compliance, so we're very excited. I have their certificates today. Um, we are celebrating them and I will be hanging those all over the place on, on their cubicles today. Um, but wanted to recognize their hard work, uh, that uh, program area will, as we all believe, continue to grow. And so um, we've, we've streamlined some processes, but I think that they feel proficient and they feel confident what they're doing. They have partnered a lot with the paramedicine program um, within the ambulance district, and that has um, proven to be a very successful program for a lot of our clients that are in crisis at that time.
Now we go to Michelle's. Options for long-term care, so. We are at the place where um, Hickpuff has started announcing the case management, um, agency R F P designated service areas. And so um, for Delta Gunnison and Hinsdale, the contract was awarded um, to Rocky Mountain Health Plans. Um, we submitted two rounds. We worked with a consultant as well as um, the county attorney's office in both rounds to navigate that process. There's now only five counties in the state that are operating their long-term care single entry points. Um, there was only, there was ten, I think, that submitted for it, and now only five. Um, the uh, Jefferson or Jefferson County is one that maintained theirs, but Pueblo and Laramo are also, um, their contracts went, one went to I think the Resource Exchange, the other one might be Rocky as well, is Rocky, yep. So at this point, um, it's, it's a transition that we're working on. Um, the official go-live date for Rocky will be March first. Um, and so during that time, we are working with Rocky for messaging to members now. So um, we're talking about letters. And their intention is to um, retain the current staff. Um, that has originally been doing this care, so there's, there's no disruption to staff members. So um, they'll be working with um, us and Michelle's unit to determine what that would look like. It is the staff's choice. Um, if they want to remain with the county or um, transition to a position with Rocky. Um, they also, at some point, they have to have a building in which they will house their staff. And so they will, um, they just consulted their um, real estate group, and so they're gonna reach out to the county to look at potentially leasing that space then from the annex um, to keep the staff there and keep that consistent for members, so as not to include disruption. Um, anything you want to add for that?
The staff members, does that affect?
Um, so there's seven of us currently, um, and I know there are a couple of staff who have talked about staying with the county. So I think we'll probably around five-ish would, would transfer over to Rocky if everything goes. It's kind of, it seems like it's going to. There's seven total right now.
And with, with what Rocky Mountain Health Plans is offering, is it comparable to what they have now? As far as salary and benefits?
Uh, yes, like the benefits, we haven't gotten to look at a ton, like they sent us a little bit of information. Um, but since our transition starts November first, I imagine we'll get a lot more. Uh, but they sent us over some salary information and some benefit stuff. So, yeah, it looks to be, I think, um, pretty good, and I think it would be, you know, if someone wants to go that way, I didn't think it would be benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and the commitment we have had from Rocky is they don't want to lose the local, um, the local face and the local staff. Um, they don't want any disruption for members that way, so um, they are actively trying to ensure that um, members are comfortable, the staff are comfortable, um, and to ensure a, a smooth process. So we're committed to working with them um, for the benefit of members that way. They'll be serving a significant amount of clients, because I believe they have, they have the Mesa County area and then up north to Laramo and then south as well, so. Yeah, there's a lot. But it aligns with the new ray alignment as well that Hickpuff is proposing, so um, they're proposing that that new ray alignment Rocky would have pretty much the entire western slope.
Is that a good thing?
I think as long as we can balance, I mean, I, I think it's a good thing for consistency for the western slope in that if a member today um, wants a certain service, um, they're getting the same service providers and options throughout the western slope. So if you're, say, next to a county that has a different ray, but there's service providers in that area, you don't have access to that. And so allowing it to be on the western slope allows that if there's providers in Junction or in Yuray, San Miguel, it allows for members in our area to be able to have access to them without having to balance being outside of their range for coverage. And then last but not least, I was gonna talk to you about Halloween, but we kind of did a little bit, so. Um, we do plan to have um, probably not as big, I think, of a uh, decorating crew as last year, I'm not sure. And, and only be, just because the staff are working so. decorating crew as last year, I'm not sure, and, and only be, just because the staff are working so hard that, you know, the decorating piece is, is taking the back burner, but, um, I still think there'll be lots of decorations and there'll be food, so somebody please volunteer for the, uh, the nominating committee for the, or the selection committee for the winners, because that trophy is pretty coveted. And, and remember, you get the food, so I mean, that's, that's the exciting part, too, but. Um, but yeah, so it just, um, I thank you guys for your support. I know that I've talked to, I think, a few of you individually also, just about the stress that a lot of our, um, staff is under right now with so much going on. I think we've tried to reiterate your support to them as well. And so I think they appreciate that and appreciate anything you guys were able to communicate with them as well.
How are the referrals from the schools? Is it kind of average or gone open?
Might be leveling out, um, just a little bit. Usually, once it hits October, it starts to level out, but, um, I wonder also, we've been utilizing a little bit of our collaborative management program for referrals, and so some of those referrals where a family is just struggling but doesn't necessarily meet abuse and neglect concerns, we've had some training with the school to say that's where your referral source is, to bring it into like a high fidelity wraparound and brainstorm and meeting for services. Um, and so some of that, um, that is a little lower than it potentially could have been, could be some of those referrals going there as well, which, um, then families are getting services and needs without having to come into child welfare or be system involved, essentially.
And I did notice we hit an all-time, all-time high in child welfare costs, so.
We did. We did. Our Q R T P placements, um, continue to rise in cost, but also rise in number. I mean, when, when you look at some of our other counties, for example, Montrose has only had one kiddo go through that process. We range anywhere from nine to eleven, and all of those have gone through the independent assessment with the ray that said this kiddo met that highest need. So it's not that, you know, we're submitting these referrals and then they don't need it, and we're continuing to keep them in care. They are all meeting that level. We all, we were on the verge of having someone have to go out of state potentially, but we were able to navigate a placement that the state picked up and paid for a couple of months to stabilize her before she could enter the Q R T P, so even a higher level. Um, and so, um, you know, it's just, those are, those are high-cost placements, but they're high treatment need. I think the amount of hours that they're required for that, even just a week, um, is between sixteen and twenty intensive hours of therapeutic treatment, um, while they're there, and they're there for hopefully not longer than six months to a year, um, is the goal, and then they return to this community with a strong discharge plan, but during that time, it's intensive treatment and it's, it's driving placement costs across the state.
Thank you.
Michelle, congratulations on your audit. Getting six out of a hundred percent.
It was adult protection. Yeah, yeah. It was Haley.
Miss her already.
I know. You should see the view from her. She sends me pictures. Especially with the colors right now, it's very beautiful. But hmm, is there a reason to go down there?
Anything else for Annie and her team?
Thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, everybody. Anything else before the board of commissioners this morning? Hearing none, we will adjourn.